I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I need a motion. We need to add under, under number eight, a new business, item number C, which is executive session for discussion of collective bargaining. Do I have a motion for an executive session? Thank you, Nick. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Any discussion on that? All right, we will be adding that to the, oh, sorry, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We'll be adding that to item C. There will be no vote after of that. There is no action taken. It's just that we, a discussion on collective bargaining. Thank you. We'll get right into it. I have nothing because we'll be, I'm sure, discussing lots of things. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Nick. Sorry, Shannon, it's too late. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Great, thank you. We will move on to our committees and liaison reports. We do not have our MASIC reps here, but under our Board of Education Committee Liaisons, Jeff did indicate that he has a change and is not able to attend anymore the Curriculum Council. Could you tell us when those, when those dates are?
Curriculum Council is usually the first Wednesday of, of the month, usually at four, 3:30 here.
Is there anybody who is able to, Wednesdays, when is the first Wednesday, 3:30?
First Wednesday of the month.
That would be willing to take that, attend that meeting?
I don't get out of work till four.
Yeah, I understand. All right, we will then keep that position open at this point until we can find somebody who can do that one. All right. We will move on to our report of our acting superintendent and obviously the big one is coming up, so go for it, Joe. I know you have lots of notes and lots of things have been changed.
I do, and, and once again, like every, any other night, stop me if I start, if I start going on too long here. So the first, the first topic is COVID-19 update and planning. You know, the one thing I've learned over the past few weeks is that there's only one thing that's for certain, and that is that nothing is, nothing is for certain. This, this situation has evolved, you know, not just by the day, but sometimes by the hour. You know, what I went to bed thinking would happen the next day or what we would do the next day was literally outdated, outdated by the time I woke up in some mornings. And even through the course of the, of the day, things changed. Most recently, you know, we got the, we got some, the email from the commissioner in the morning talking, talking to us about, about the plan to apply for a waiver. And that was at about 9:30. I think I got that email by six o'clock that night. He had, he'd already said, you know, no more waivers. You don't need waivers. Just move forward and start planning with the, you know, start planning your distance learning plans, implementing your distance learning plans. As you guys remember, the, the initial recommendation from the commissioner was that schools go into a full closure for the short term and retain, and refrain from distance learning. You know, for all the reasons that I talked about at the last meeting, the, the equity issue, special education issues, all those things, like I already said, as you know, that's, that's already changed as we're looking at, you know, probably a prolonged closure. You know that the governor has closed schools down till March 31st, but all indications from every other outlet seems to indicate that we're in this for the long haul. Although I was recommending against going to distance learning at the last meeting, we had already started planning for it. We started that planning in, in late February, and that continued on through the beginning of March. Our March 4th Curriculum Council meeting was, was emphasized that exact topic, looking at a distance learning plan in the event that we had a long-term closure, knowing that, you know, coronavirus was, you know, was growing. I really can't begin to explain the outpouring of support that we, that we've had throughout this whole situation, but especially over the last 24 hours as we put the final touches on our interim learning plan. We had more than 50 people participate. Parents came out yesterday, teachers, administrators, staff from SEDEXO, central office staff. All of them gave their time yesterday and today to produce a final draft that's going to go out to staff and to families tomorrow morning. We met in here. That's why this room is the way it's set up, not because it was packed with people, but because we had about one person at each table. Tried to, you know, respect the, the conditions that were, that have been outlined to us to try to avoid. You know, had some, had quite a bit of social distancing. We had about, probably about 25 people here, and then another 25 people participate through a Google Hangout as well. You know, with the group, this is, this is, this was kind of the process that we, that we went through yesterday. With the, with the, with the big group, with all 50 of us, we generated a list of questions that we needed to answer to make distance learning a reality. So we took, you know, just whoever had any, anything that we thought we needed to address to get this thing off the ground. It wasn't a matter of, no, we can't do it because of this. It was, okay, this is, this is an issue, and how are we going to address it? So we, as a, as a big group, and it was good, like I said, we had a good cross-section of people. So parents had some really good insight. We had parents from the elementary, middle, and high school here. So we had a good cross-reference, cross-section of, of everyone. So we, the first thing we did is we generated a big group of, of questions that we needed to answer. Then we grouped those questions into seven or eight categories, things like technology logistic, technology systems, communications, labor issues, special education, elementary, middle, and high school, faculty support, parent support, all these different, all these different categories. We then broke into small groups from there, and each group addressed the questions from their particular category. Broke off for about an hour or so. Each category then came back, reported out to the big group. Then the administrative team, with the help of some of the other staff, like the K-5 coordinators, hammered out a draft yesterday in through today, probably, you know, seems to be completed. And I use complete loosely because this is, it's something that's, that's going to definitely evolve. But that was, you know, they put the final touches up on it probably around four, 4:30 tonight. That will be sent to staff first tomorrow, and then it'll go out to families a little bit later in the day. Want to give the staff a chance to look at the plan, you know, ask their questions of their principals or instructional leaders, myself, whoever. This was a completely collaborative process. It was collaborative internally with, with the group I talked about, but it was also collaborative externally as well, as district superintendents from the whole state have been sharing parts of their plans that they, as they've been going on, going along, and we're doing the same thing with other ones. So, you know, it, it was nice to see a lot of people come together. Everyone knew they were in the same boat. We're all in, we're on this together. We've got to figure out how can we, how can we make this, you know, as good as possible. Make no mistake, this thing is, is not perfect. We are going to have, we're going to have bumps. We're going to have glitches. We're going to have technology issues, connectivity, any of that. If there are any, any parents watching right now, you know, all I would ask first is, is for your patience as we get through these first few days. And then I ask you to be partners with us and communicate with your child's teachers' issues as they arrive. We know they're going to arise. We know that for a fact. But we're giving our best efforts to meet all the requirements, including special education services to the greatest extent possible, you know, during this completely unprecedented time. So I'm going to pass out the plan in a second, but, you know, not include, the, the plan that I'm going to pass out talks about the academic, but as you know, the, the plan also addressed some of our most basic needs, and that's, you know, food security and providing food to students that need it. We have 327 students in Monroe Public Schools that are on free and reduced lunch. You know, they rely on school lunch. For some of them, that could be their only solid meal of the day. And we had to make sure that we were, we were taking care of them. We worked really closely as part of all this, but again, that's not necessarily reflected in this plan. But we worked really closely with SEDEXO, who, who applied to the state to provide lunch during the closure. What we've agreed on was that we would do it at Jackie Hollow. Thought Jackie Hollow was more centrally located in the district. You know, if you're on the 59 side of town, you know, it's kind of far to come all the way over here. So meals are going to be prepared at Jackie Hollow. It's going to be a grab-and-go ser, it's going to be a grab-and-go style, so parents, grandparents, whoever can pick up, write down their, their child's name that they're, or their children's name that they're picking up lunch for and, and leave. At the emergency operations meeting hosted by First Black McKellogg on Monday, you know, we talked about this plan, and we also are coordinating with social services to have some volunteers to drive lunches for those people who can't get here. If you have parents that, I know a lot of people are stuck in their homes, and they'll probably be able to get out and drive, but if you do have some that are in essential jobs and can't get out, the, you know, we'll, we'll deliver those meals. As of about 11 o'clock this morning, we had about, I think, like 85 people, because we sent out a form, a Google form today. We had about 85 people who had already signed up for their kids to, to receive a, a meal, you know, in the days ahead. That will start on, that will start on Thursday.
Excuse me, Jerry, did you have a question?
Well, I do, and I'm, I'm trying to bring, so Joe just explained it, the email, and I, I read it quick, so it's available to those who are on free and reduced lunch, not to everyone.
Actually, the-
If the way I read it, I might have read it the wrong way, so.
No, 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 you're, you know, you're absolutely right. It actually is open to anyone. So under, under the waiver by the state, it's a great question, Jerry. Under the waiver by the state, we can't make any differentiation if they're on free or reduced lunch.
Which is fantastic. I just wanted to clarify from my own, okay, so any, any child in town-
Any, any school-aged child between three and 18, probably three and 21 if they receive special education services, you know, can, can receive a lunch.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm going to just pass out really quickly. These are the plans. There's two, there's two here. We've, we've got them broken up into K-5 and 612. And like I said, these things, oop, I have one of those, Jeff, sorry, just in case you guys have any questions.
Joe, I have a quick question before regarding, regarding Chromebooks and stuff. A couple of parents I got texts from were confused about, is the expectation that every school-aged child has a device so that they can get online?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There may be some exceptions at the lower grades. I know pre-K, I don't think they're anticipating kids getting online.
No, well, like I, like I had a friend who was like, well, I have four kids. I have the computer at home, but does all four need to be online at the same time? And I was like, yes. And they were just like, well, the, the email wasn't very clear about that. So like, they're thinking, oh, I have access, I have access, not realizing like that, yes, everybody needs their own device to access, because the high school kids may be on at the same time as the elementary and middle school, so it's, it needs to be, everybody has to have their own device.
Absolutely, yeah. And I will send up a, either myself or what I'll ask the principals to do is send out a follow-up email tomorrow.
Yes, please.
I did get that question. I did have one of the parents from Parents Council reach out to me because I think that was a little bit of a buzz on, on social media today. And she, I think she was putting that back out to parents, so they knew. But yeah, we're asking for every single student, and I, I don't think that's going to be an issue for us. Think I, I don't know if I told you Thursday or not, but MASIC went through and, you know, I think they only gave out-
Yes, you did.
You said 30.
You did.
Had the middle school gone through that yet or no?
Not, not that number yet. I just looked before I left. I think we're around a dozen at this point.
Right, but you haven't given them out, like the high school gave them out on Thursday, but middle school and elementary did not give any, distribute anything at this point?
Correct. And I don't think the elementary have as yet. We started the day after MASIC did. And we only did it because we wanted a parent to acknowledge that a child had borrowed. We thought at that age it was important that an adult knew that their child had taken a school device home.
Perfect.
And so what's our, what's our available inventory for people that need the-
We will have, I don't know the total. I'm, I'm not, we have enough devices, I think, to, if we had to outfit every kid from, I want to say, three through 12, even if I said five through 12, with only 30 being used at, with only 30 being used at the high school, we were going to have plenty of inventory for-
So only 30 needed to go out from the high school?
30 from the high school, right. So there's, you know, there's, you know, we have over, you know, we have 1,030 kids at MASIC. We, we have 1,000 still, just at MASIC. The other question that did come up about that, and I'm glad you brought it up, Donna, was I got the question about iPads, and will iPads work? And, and you can try them, but you, I think people would be better served with a laptop or a Chromebook. You know, most of our, most of our, the work that we do is through the Google Suite, G Suite. And Google and Apple don't like to play nice in the sandbox, so.
And just so you know, Joe, she did put out a post explaining what, what you had said. The lady who had talked to you did go on Monroe Parents and say, wait a minute, you need one for a child, and explained why.
Okay, good.
So it was good.
But we should still send something out just for those who don't look at Facebook?
Oh, there are people that aren't on Monroe Parent. You are correct.
So like I said, this is, you know, this was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears over the past 24 hours to get this put together. I said collaboration internally, collaboration externally. I keep, I keep, Donna, when this is like the Constitution to me, it's going to change. It's going to change. And what I said to the, what I said to our staff was, as it changes, as we find out, hey, this is a horrible idea. This is a bad idea. Let's take this out. You know, let's take it out of the plan. Hey, this is really good. This is working really well. Let's use this. Let's put that into the plan. So we have a framework as we move forward and, you know, God forbid we're ever in a situation like this again.
Joe, I have a question. How are you going to do initial PPT meetings?
I don't think they're going to, uh-
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, without, unless all the-
You just might want to fix this.
Okay. With, yeah, without the, I mean, that's what I've seen. Most districts are not, are foregoing the initials for now.
Yeah, initials and PPT number two.
Yep. What page were you just on? Were you at the K-5 one?
Yeah, K-5, Special Education Student Support Staff.
So this is going to run sort of like a full school day?
It is, yep.
Has there been any guidance from the, the state or the commissioner on-
Distance learning.
Potential, potential for parents and students to not be satisfied with a plan that any given district comes up with? I'm, I am continually concerned about liability.
Me too.
And let me back up for a second. I, I too have been following what the commissioner's been saying, and how nine o'clock you get one thing, and in the same day, six o'clock, you get a different thing. But that last letter that he sent out saying, in essence, start your distance learning, he said it much better than that, there was no discussion about if something goes wrong with regards to a sped student, an IEP, a PPT, even a non-sped student who feels that they're not getting an education that is what we're supposed to, what is, what is the liability exposure for the district, and how are we thinking about that globally?
Yeah, they have not, their state has not given any guidance yet. Now, I have to assume they're pretty overwhelmed, and they're going to be, you know, they will hopefully do something very, very soon in terms of, of giving some direction in that, you know, giving some guidance in that direction. I did have a, we did have a conference call with Tom Mooney on, that was yesterday. Tom Mooney is the attorney at Shipman &amp; Goodwin. It's the, Tom Mooney wrote, there's a book called Connecticut School Law that's probably in every administrator's office in this state. Tom Mooney's the guy who, who wrote the book, and he held a conference call with, I think there was over 700 people on the conference call in the state yesterday listening into it. And, you know, basically, you know, his argument and what, and what caps is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, you know, what he's advocating for them to encourage the State Department is to hold districts harmless, if they are putting, you know, what they're calling the, you know, taking interim measures to fulfill IEPs in Section 504 Plan requirements to the greatest extent possible. You know, using terms like, if districts are giving their best efforts in, in providing services, providing regular education, special education, trying to hold districts harmless in these unprecedented times. But the state hasn't yet necessarily come out with anything. They, they did provide today a bank of resources for districts for distance learning that, you know, again, this is one of those things where the, you know, all of the different towns, all the different districts were getting, you know, we were compiling all kinds of resources. And it's really becoming overwhelming. If one more person sends me an email with, hey, how about these resources? Resources, have you looked at them? Like, holy cow, I can only take so many in my inbox. But we were doing a lot of that work and trying to put it together. And the state did come out with like a whole bunch of resources for people. And what was nice about theirs is they did index it nicely as, by grade level, by subject, things like that. So that was pretty helpful. But they have not given any, any guidance yet, Nick, in terms of liability and exposure. But, you know, I, you know, based on the, the second email that came out about, hey, just get this thing started, leads me to believe that they know that we're in dire straits, and we just need to get something going because, you know, we're facing a really, a really big possibility of not being here. And I think, you know, the other thing, and this, you know, more for me personally talking, you know, I have the, I guess, the unfortunate circumstance personally to be in a situation where I have two senior daughters. You know, one in college and one in high school. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of, a lot of disappointment. My, my oldest daughter, you know, the rug got pulled from her. You know, it's, you know, for all of us who went to college, those four years were pretty great. The last two months were, were really great. You know, for a high school senior right now who had the fashion show coming up, who's staring down the face of the possibility of not having a senior prom, you know, scary things out there. You know, we're going to talk about graduation tonight, and, you know, there's, you know, very real possibility that, you know, these things may not happen. So, you know, we have to do everything we can to, to support our kids. They're, you know, and, and that's just, those kids, I mean, all kids, young kids are probably, you know, all, all sorts of confused about what's going on right now. Why are they not in school? And, you know, as, as parents and as educators, how we talk to them is, is really important. And those are, and, you know, those are serious things that are facing our kids. You know, there's other way bigger issues too. I have two friends that just recently, you know, one lost his mother-in-law, and the wake was canceled. One just lost his 29-year-old son. It was a MASIC graduate. And, you know, part of the grieving process is, you know, the wakes are there for a reason. It's, it's to support the living. And, you know, he doesn't, you know, they're not going to have that opportunity to, to wake their child and have, you know, proper burial with, you know, people to come, friends and whatnot to support him because, you know, the organization, the businesses aren't letting them, rightfully so. So it is, it is, it is way bigger than-
The world has changed.
This is going to change. This is going to, everyone keeps saying, this is going to change how we work and live. And I think they're right.
Yep. But it is, it is a huge concern, what's going to happen. You know, because the liability issue does loom over every district.
But that was important, what she just said. That's how I sleep at night. It's every district. It's just not Monroe. And the one thing I know, working at the state level with the different commissioners, they understand that we're just one of many. I mean, if we're held, if, if they say we violate, then so did the other 160 whatever districts.
And all I'm saying is I'm putting myself in the shoes of a special ed parent in Monroe.
Right.
And I'm thinking about looking at this plan tomorrow, seeing what's available to me. We know that many times the state is not reliable for what they say they're going to give the districts.
Understood, on point.
Every year. And so I, although I, although I'm part of the state government in a very small way, I frankly, I shouldn't say this live, don't trust them.
Understood.
And we, it happens to us every year, at least on the education side. And so the letter from the commissioner, the six o'clock letter, I felt was written in such a specific way, it was almost suspicious at the language that was used in that letter, which was, get going, get started. This is going to be, as you said, Joe, most likely a prolonged event, and then we'll see what happens on the other side. And I just want it kind of on the record now that, you know, as you said, we're doing the best that we can with what we're given, but I am not holding my breath for the state. And I agree with you that if Monroe is not held harmless, every other district is not held harmless. But all it's going to take is, you know, one or two or three people who, rightfully so, could feel upset about the education-
I actually think that's sad, that everybody's working so hard to try and make this situation work for learning at home equitably for everybody as possible, and that it has to be such a concern that there's going to be a small group of people who are going to be litigious-minded with this, with this situation. I actually find that disheartening and sad. It's wonderful to see the community coming together and supporting each other and trying to help each other and looking out for their neighbors and the elderly. And the fact that everybody, you know, is working so hard to try and find a way to make distance learning, which is really our only option right now. And we, every district is faced with a situation where we are going to have bumps in the road, and it's not going to be perfect. And everybody's rolling up their sleeves and pitching in. And some, the fact that we have to even be worried about people who want to come after us and sue us for doing so breaks my heart. That's how I feel about that.
I think we have to, we, we can't let that dissuade us, right? We need to focus on the goal, and we need to move forward.
Of course.
Agreed.
Of course.
I think the, the fact of the matter, we're talking to some of my colleagues, is, you know, the sad reality is that, yeah, there, there could be some attorneys out there sharpening their pencils right now. But, you know, like you said, we can't live in, can't live in fear.
Exactly, exactly. Everybody's trying to do what's best for everybody, and, and that's a reality. So people are sharpening their pencils. I don't think that's rightfully so. I respectfully, wholeheartedly disagree that that's rightfully so.
Absolutely.
Agreed with you, yes.
I think, you know, this is all in its infancy right now, but my, my perception from the outside is that we're ahead of the game here. You know, the fact that you put together a plan like this in that short period of time, and you're going to be ready to go pretty soon, is, is commendable, so.
It's unfortunate that the, that the public is not invited, because I would have loved to have the, the 50 people that put this together. It was, it was, it was incredible. It was really, it was, it was touching how, how well people worked and the, the collaborative nature, like I said, amongst a, a number of different groups, you know. Wasn't just, again, the nice thing about this, this is it wasn't just a bunch of administrators sitting in a room saying, hey, this is what we're going to do. You know, it's a lot of feedback.
I think everybody knows that too, Joe.
Go ahead.
You know, everybody knows that, that it's a collaborative effort, and it's not just the administrators. It's, it's all the teachers and everybody that brings something to the table for something like this. So, good work.
Thank you. Anything else on that?
Keep going.
The, the rest is pretty easy. Board of Ed self-evaluation, I know, amongst everything else. But March 30th, I think Terry had sent you, sent out something.
Did she? I must have-
Yeah, it was under Joe. It wasn't under Terry. It was on, under Joe.
Oh, she sent it out.
I'll have to look. There's just been so much-
Came out the 3rd, I think, like March?
There has just been so much clutter.
Understood.
And I don't want to use the word clutter, but just so much information going back and forth with CAEB and, and stuff, which some of it I've sent out to you guys, that it's just hard to keep up with everything because I probably get 100, 150 emails a day because of just on the whole CAEB and ever-changing stuff and what other districts are doing and, and stuff. So I probably missed it, but I'll go back and find it.
And if you, if you, I mean, no. The other, before, before we turn it over to Rhonda to talk about some of the financials, I do have, if you guys want, at the end of the meeting, if you just want to sign, put your email here. If you want, what I'm trying to do is have a-
Bless you, Joseph. Yeah, go ahead.
A distribution list that includes, when I send out school messengers, that I can just click Board of Ed members and put it out. So if you just want your Board of Ed email address, that's fine. Some of you have private email addresses that you probably check more often. Just put those down. And I'm, I'm going to ask Lisa Shishkin to create a, a group for you guys, so I don't have to remember, after I send it out, and then I'm like, oh, I didn't, because when I send it out, it's not just like I'm sending, sitting there sending a message because it's all in one system. So I write the message, then I write the message for the phone, then I record the phone one, then I put it on Twitter, Facebook. It's all, it's all part of one process. So by the time when I'm done, I forget that I was supposed to forward it to you guys. And it'd be a lot easier if you guys were just one, one group to pick from, so.
Now, I already get it. Now, I already get it.
Me too.
Yeah, some of you that have kids get it. Yeah.
You guys.
Me too.
Nick and I don't get it. Alan doesn't get it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. I forgot you.
Yeah, my kid's graduated.
Graduated.
Yeah, well, she, you're right. Okay, yeah.
So just a forget thing.
Just a. We're all getting it.
Um, I'm gonna.
Hey, Joe?
Yes, Dave.
Sorry, it's Dave. Um, I'm sorry, just go back to the distance learning. Can you at some point tonight or tomorrow email those of us on the on this call, uh, what you just handed out to the public?
Will do, Dave. Yeah, I'll get that out to you tonight.
And uh, and if I'm understanding you right, sorry to go back to the distance learning, but so the children with technology and with Wi-Fi at home are gonna be in a virtual classroom for five to six hours a day from class to class to class. Am I understanding that right?
Pretty much. Um, you know, pretty much, it's not gonna be as as rigorous. You know, there's, there's some definitions in the um, there's, there's some definitions in in the um plan that pertain, there's two different plans, Dave, and I know you don't, you can't see them because you're not here. Um, but I will email them to you. There's like the K-5 plan and the 612 plan. But there's definitions in both of them that talk about synchronous learning and asynchronous learning. Um, so, you know, a lot of this is gonna depend on the teachers. The teachers will be available during those times. There will be synchronous learning time when the teacher's on with the kid, doing the work. Um, and then there will be asynchronous learning where, you know, a teacher may post a video, maybe a video of himself, him or herself, or a Khan Academy video, ask the kids to watch it, do an assignment. If they do that, you know, outside of the timeframe of, you know, um, school, that's kind of up to them. Although we are trying to encourage kids and, you know, the email that I'll send out to parents tomorrow is, you know, try to keep as as much of a regular structure as possible. So this does have, Dave, to your question, you know, for the high school, for example, they do have um kind of times broken down, you know, hey, this is when your period one class will be, period two, whatever. And the elementary one is written a little bit differently. It's written more in terms of, you know, expect about this much time for this, you know, for English Language Arts, this much time for math. But um, you know, the expectation is that, you know, pretty much from, you know, nine to three at the elementary level and seven to two at the secondary level, um, you know, teachers will be available for kids during during those times.
Okay, and I I know um, when they do grading, um, those grades will be posted, but um will they be able to, will will we be able to keep up with attendance and issues like that?
So the plan does talk about attendance. Um, you know, uh, parents are still gonna be asked right now if their kid happens to be unavailable. Maybe the kid's really sick and, you know, can't get online, you know, that, those things are gonna happen. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna do attendance um for parents the traditional way. Um, you know, they're gonna call the attendance line, leave a message, uh, or hopefully talk to somebody. Um, and we'll log that through Power School like we normally do. Teachers um will also keep attendance through a a number of different means. If they post this, you know, um, an assignment and the kid does it during that time, or even if they do it after that time. So again, this is where that asynchronous piece comes in. You know, if a kid, you know, if there is a a Google form that a kid has to complete before, uh, you know, during the day, and they do it at seven o'clock, as long as it's done, they're marked as present for that class that day, even though they weren't there from, you know, nine to nine-thirty, if it didn't need to be. And that's where the communication between home and school is gonna become really important.
Okay, thank you. I I don't wanna tie up the meeting any further. I'll look at it.
Yeah.
And and how is grades working? Because I'm sure parents are gonna ask that. How are we doing grades? Well, middle school and high school, the little ones probably won't have.
Yeah, grades will be done, uh, you know, as as assignments get uh done and completed, grades will go into Power School and the Power School will be updated, and parents will have access to the grades.
Okay. And will they be trying to do tests too?
Um, that's gonna be a a work in progress. There will be, there will be forms of assessment.
Okay.
What is it, what it looks like is probably gonna be a little bit different. And it's gonna force us to be very creative, obviously, you know. We're gonna have to really rethink the way we uh, you know, the way we provide instruction and especially how we provide assessment.
Yep. And well, again, this is gonna be a work in progress. And I think.
It is a work in progress.
And I think, as you said before, everybody just really, we ask that everybody just be very patient as we work through this, because it will not be perfect. And I'm sure this will be evolving over the weeks um ahead and that, you know, with all this and trying to figure it out and navigate.
Weeks to come, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard when I can't see. I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're fine.
Um, just that it's it's probably gonna be evolving over over the several weeks to come. It's just such a a new world with with things that we're just not used to. And if people could try, if any parents are listening, to try to have the mindset of be being a part of solution, um, and rolling up their sleeves and pitching in rather than litigious-minded, that would help make this process go better for everybody.
Absolutely. It it's, it's diff, it's gonna be different. I was in here, you know, I was in here yesterday, and we we did the meeting through Google Hangouts, and it was, it was challenging. It was difficult. It was, you know, there, there's gonna be snafus. We were doing Google Hangouts and we had so many people on at once that if you spoke and someone had their, you know, their mute, you know, they were unmuted, the sound that they were hearing was then reverberating through their speaker and making it difficult for everyone else to hear. And there's all those little logistical things that I'm sure are gonna come up um throughout this. And and we'll figure it out.
What platform are you using?
Uh, we've mostly been using Google, but I know you were talking about Zoom.
Yeah, Zoom is, Zoom works brilliantly.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And and I don't think we've necessarily settled on a platform. The the one thing I will say, um, and there's concern, there's concern from, you know, it it's not just from our people, but from the the CEA um about doing um, you know, classes live with with kids that, you know, they, the CEA is strongly encouraging and their uh, their uh, their membership not to do live classes for the fear of, you know, violating student, student privacy, um, violating FERPA, violating special education laws, you know, if if a parent walks by the screen and sees who else is receiving some sort of special education services, if it's a guided learning class, there's some major, major, major exposure there. So, um, you know, we are not requiring people to do.
So recorded sessions?
So I think, you know, we're not making that a mandate, but I think the majority of stuff we'll see will be um videos that'll be up and the teachers available, you know, um, you know, online with the kids as they're working through a particular, you know. Um, I I think teacher, I think we've, you know, we've talked a lot about Teachers College in the past few years. And um, you know, we've done a lot of great work with them at the elementary schools. And that's why, you know, our elementary schools are outstanding because of the work we've done there. And I think the work that we've done at Teachers College is gonna filter through our district because Teachers College, the whole model is based on the teacher doing a short 10 or 15-minute mini lesson, and then the kid's doing work and the teacher checking for understanding, going around, working in different groups. And that's kind of gonna be the model that we're gonna have to implement in this. So, you know, the good thing is, we have a pretty good framework, you know, for that in this district.
Agreed. And my little one, just as uh, uh, from experience, she she, her teacher recorded a this small snippet video to say hi and, you know, here's what what I want you guys to to, you know, keep, keep pace on and, you know. So I think that that's, that's important. Uh, I think that that's probably a good model to go with. To Alan's point, though, uh, do we have licensing for a software that we can do this with?
Well, Google Hangouts, I know we have because we're part of the G-Suite. Zoom, I'm not sure.
I think that.
Zoom is free.
Is it free?
There's licensing for that.
Like, we could all sign up for a Zoom account. My understanding, we could all sit down right now, sign up for a Zoom account.
Yeah.
But I think you need host licenses. So if the teacher's gonna host a meeting with other individuals in it, that you might need a license for that.
Okay.
So just something to look into.
Organizational, like, so like Fairfield uses Zoom, but you log in on your Fairfield email and your Fairfield account. Like, you don't want all the teachers using their personal account, wanting to use their Monroe PS account. So it's an organizational license.
Right. So we, we could probably buy an enterprise license or, you know, individual licenses for teachers, and then the kids can just download the software and log in.
Yeah, but we're talking, I mean, the Zoom would be a live essential broadcast. We're talking.
But you can also stream, right? Or you could, you, she.
You can record.
A teacher would be able to record themselves and then broadcast it using that software.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I know the other one that they were looking at was GoToMeeting. Is that, that's what we were trying to use for.
Yeah, Zoom.
Yeah, we're trying to use that for tonight, but that did not work very well.
The problem was, I I, the bigger problem for GoToMeeting tonight was, and and I don't know if it was, I imagine the same thing could have been for Zoom, was uh, trying to get the license, and then they were just so backlogged across the country, they couldn't, they couldn't support it tonight.
But I was on a two-and-a-half-hour meeting today on Zoom, and there was no problem whatsoever. Pitcher was crystal clear. Nobody got interrupted. I mean.
It's a good product.
Yeah, that's a, my, that's a, my daughter's college. All her classes are starting tomorrow.
Yeah. And we'll probably use, probably use that possibly next meeting, because this will be our last in-person meeting for a while. We just couldn't get that GoToMeeting's up and we didn't have enough time at the last minute to do Zoom. But by next meeting, we'll either be using Zoom or GoToMeeting or something, but it will not be here in person.
Zoom's one of the only stocks up the last couple of weeks.
I was just gonna say, there's gotta be that and Netflix.
Yep. Charmin's not up.
They're under, yeah.
Yeah, maybe. It's 20 bucks a month for Enterprise Zoom.
Okay.
I think the point is, though, that this is a work in progress, right?
Yes.
This might be, you know, two steps forward, one step back. The point is, you know, you, you, you and our teachers have our full support in doing what's needed. And, you know, if people, I know it's been said, but have the patience to bear with us and and be a solution, you know, for the problem. Instead of, you know, uh, the opposite.
Absolutely.
I think if they read their own Monroe parent Facebook posts, they'll understand that as of this morning, half of them were ready to suspend or expel their own kids. So if they just go back and read what they post, I think they'll understand. There's a lot of hiccups. There's a lot of bumps.
We could make that as, uh, we could make that part of our plan. We could add a display of the company where parents could put their kids in detention and we'll log it on Power School for them.
I told them, how can I transfer this kid out of my class?
Did somebody really post that?
Oh, somebody went on and on.
How can I transfer this kid out of my class? It was a joke meme, but, no, but but to Jeff, but to Jeff's sentiment, really, if we can, we're, well, if we can all work together and be a part of the solution, if you could put your energy towards that, that is what we all need right now as a community.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
All right.
All right. Uh, the next, the next piece is the financial update. I'll let Ron give the famous line that he's given to me about the financial update right now. Go ahead, Ron.
What, that it's a second fiddle for.
Well, it's uh, it's not, it's not worth the uh.
Oh, it's not worth the paper it's written on at this point. Yeah, so, obviously, a lot of the uh, uh, impact of COVID-19 is is not in the uh, projection that you received. So, um, the current projection is probably, I I can tell you one thing, it's gonna be a lot different than than what's on the paper. You know, um, we've, we've kinda gone through briefly, and there, there's gonna be some savings, obviously, but there's also gonna be some unknown costs that we just can't capture at this point. You know, and I'm sure a lot of it's gonna be driven by the uh, the uh, distance learning. So, um, having said that, so fiscal year 19, um, the auditor, there is a tentative um date for the auditors to come to the Board of Finance, in which the Board of Ed would be um invited to that meeting if the meeting happens or if it happens remotely. Um, that date is May 21st. That is a regularly scheduled Board of Finance meeting. Uh, so as we get closer to that, I'll keep everyone uh abreast of that. Um, so fiscal year 2020, um, the projection is in your packet. I've already, you know, kind of filled the end. It doesn't include any uh, COVID information. It it does include a proposed um budget amendment that uh is in your packet, um, which is part of the free, ongoing freeze. Um, so that, I'd like to discuss that for a little bit. Um.
Ron, can I ask a question about?
Sure.
The projection first?
Absolutely.
So you have it now that the deficit is 932, 286.
Mm-hmm.
Now, have there been any other discussions about the town picking up, there's about 685 in the medical and the dental?
Mm-hmm. Like, I think the town said they're gonna pick up 700, right?
Yes.
That's what I was told, yeah.
Yes.
So 700 from the 932, putting aside the coronavirus, which we, you know, roll the dice, who knows, right? That's still 232 under.
But we did the budget freezes. Does this include the freezes?
So.
This is just the total amount.
Yeah, so so it does, it does include the freezes.
So we're still over 200?
The budget amendment that we have not yet adopted is included in this projection as it would be adopted tonight.
Correct.
So.
Where do we get the other?
So.
There's another 232.
He's wondering where that's coming from.
The, um, the town's contingency is, now, we don't know what the town's gonna need the contingency for under the circumstances, correct? You know, so it's, it's uh, um, there, there's a possibility there's more available than the 700. I don't wanna speak for the first selectmen. The contingency is a million. There, there are needs on the town side. Um.
Also, if the budget, if the budget is adopted.
Yep.
Whenever that may be, there's, the budget has, even with the current budget, there's still something like eight and a half million dollars in the undesignated balance, correct?
It's, I believe it's a little, I believe it's a little more.
It's more than that.
Yeah.
Okay, whatever. I mean, so.
Almost 10 million, I thought.
But there's money from, being taken from the undesignated fund and being put into the upcoming budget year.
That's correct.
Yes.
So it's coming down, I don't know what the number at the end is, but.
There's like 2.5 million that's being taken out.
Right. So, anyway.
What are our opportunities, I guess, is is what we would be looking at. And I understand that there's gonna be some costs associated with the distance learning program, but there's also, as you pointed out, Ron, savings associated with not staffing a building. Not having to have the heat on or the lights on or.
Or running buses.
Buses or stipends.
Transportation would would be the big one.
Okay.
And that, and that's dependent upon how long we're out. And if if we're, you know, buses.
That's not contractual.
I was just gonna ask. Thank you.
So, um.
I asked this question today.
Yes.
I did ask this question today. I know the answer.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll actually read it from the contract. If the total number of days for any school year covered hereunder shall be less, less or more than 182, the contract price payable shall be adjusted either upward or downward in the case, as the case may be, on a per rata, per diem basis.
Oh, wow.
But does that mean, well, since we're counting days?
They're not using, they're not using the buses.
So if they don't use them, we don't pay them.
The commissioners.
Yeah, but we're great. If we're gonna count those day, I mean, if we're gonna count those days.
You see what I'm saying? I do know.
We're counting those days.
As school days.
As school days. That contract does not stipulate the fact of the buses run or not.
And you have to think about that, the company's All-Star. You have to think about All-Star's revenue. I mean, they're just gonna adjust down every single contract that they have. They have to pay people too.
It's gonna be a state call on this one, because once again, we're not gonna be the only school system affected with this.
Everybody is.
Right. They've already, I think, laid off all their staff.
Yeah, you'd have to.
The company has.
Yes.
I I'd assume the way we understood it, the way Joe is, they don't get paid. Let them prove that they have to.
Right, because they didn't run buses.
They did not run the buses. But I do know what you're saying. School is in session technically compared to, in the eyes of the state of Connecticut, school's in session.
Well, if we're not using buses, we're not using buses. We shouldn't have to pay.
Gotcha. This is, this is the slippery slope.
Yeah, there's no contract language that's gonna speak to something like this, right? So.
Right. If the buses aren't running.
Think the, the spirit of the contract.
Is that the buses, yeah, that the buses aren't running.
Right. Tort liability, my friends.
But utilities may be another opportunity for us, right?
There's no athletics either. I mean, there's no athletics, but.
Which means you don't get, you don't get the revenue.
Right.
Right, but you're not paying the referees, so maybe that's an offset.
You're not paying the stipends.
Well, now, I was gonna bring, bring this up. What about the stipends? I mean, what's happening? If they did a half a seat, like, the way this interrupted, was the winter season over already?
The winter season was almost. There was tournaments.
So they're getting paid.
So you would say those people would get paid, but nobody from the spring would get paid.
Right. But there is only, what, hockey and boys' basketball?
No, but they would still, they would have gotten their stipends.
Right, right. But I'm saying, when you're talking about sports, that's all you're talking about.
Basketball.
It was. It was hockey was done, right? So you're only talking about boys' basketball.
And I think swimming and diving too, right?
You might have had, we might have had a couple of kids who were stuck.
But that's it. It wasn't like you were in the middle of winter sports.
And again, I, I don't even know if sports have been formally canceled at this point.
Not yet.
I don't know, but.
Yeah.
Probably.
You kinda just canceled its graduation. Who knows?
I know. All the schools are canceling their graduations.
Yes.
Do we have salaried employees that we would be potentially laying off that aren't under any type of collective bargaining?
We're gonna go into executive session to discuss collective bargaining at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, to Jeff's point, though, is there are the groups that aren't covered by that, so.
All groups are pretty much covered by, except for a handful of.
A handful, yeah.
Handful.
Yep, I agree.
But those are central office, mostly staff.
Can, can I ask one more question, Ron? Have you, um, been talking to any of your counterparts in other towns, either on the, I don't know if you're in the Board of Ed, Finance Director, uh, but on the town side? How they're, how?
I, I, you know what, Nick? I actually have not.
Right.
I have not.
I mean, because, uh, you know, to Jerry's point, one thing I do wanna say is that the state of Connecticut, for their purposes, the, the letter of the commissioner, which again, I'm gonna say was written a very interesting way, is not mandating distance learning, right? Right? There could be districts in the state right now who are choosing to stay full closed and not count school days. So now it's, now it's a hundred and however many districts there are doing different things. That's, um, at the same time, everybody has to project out and try to forecast. Now, if you're running, you know, if you're in another district and this two forty-six, four sixteen is a plus, well, then you have plenty of room to move up and down and buses are more and this is less. But when you're in debt, you know, in a six-figure deficit, every single thing that you do is gonna impact. And how, how far out can you say the buses aren't gonna run, we're gonna lower the per diem rate and take it off? And then, let's say, school comes back May fifteenth, and then you have everything that has to restart again, so.
Yeah. Well, you know, there, there are some other, uh, you know, facilities was where the majority of the budget amendment was, uh, where the majority of the funds were pulled from. Um, that, that was put together before, you know, everything happened last week. So are there some other monies that can be grabbed? Probably, you know, or, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Maintaining the fields. I don't know.
Field prep, that's what I thought. Astro turf, the prep of the field, and oh, my god.
A, a lot of, um.
The paint that we use.
Whether it's the cutting of the gra, you know, I don't know.
We can cut the grass just once a month, not once a week.
Yeah.
Right. So what you, I think you're gonna have other savings in there.
There's gonna be a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
I think it's just keeping up on latest estimates with everything.
Right.
Seeing how we're tracking.
But I still think our buses is gonna give, yield the biggest savings.
When you think about what it costs to power a school, to heat a school, for the, the maintenance of the pool, for the maintenance of the fields and things like that, all those, uh, there's fixed costs that we have to have every year just for run and maintain. And a lot of that goes away.
Mm-hmm. I think we'll just need to keep a very close eye on this over the coming weeks and see where we're at. Because we actually even paid the bus contract through the end of March, so we're actually due money back from them.
Is there any timeline from the town on appropriating the funds to come to the Board of Ed to cover the medical and dental?
It just needs to be by June thirtieth.
Correct.
Before the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth.
And we're confident that we have a firm commitment that that's gonna happen?
Yes, that is what the.
I, I believe the first selectman.
Made that public in his budget.
He did make that public. That was a public comment.
Yeah.
Nick, the commissioner just came out with the letter, which I'm not gonna read right now, it's lengthy, but he just came out with it four minutes ago clarifying everything he said, so hopefully it will help.
That's probably written with that very particular language.
Just came out with it. I, I'm not gonna read the whole thing.
Right. I think over the coming weeks, we'll get a much more clearer picture of what's going, what, where we are.
Agreed.
But I think we need to be mindful of, you know, keeping an eye on the financials. This isn't a part of time where like, oh, yeah, this is all good, we just forget about that. I think we still need to be just as mindful of keeping an eye on where we are, but it's gonna be interesting over the next couple of weeks, what happens and where we are.
And it sounds like it's, if it changes daily, we can't just overreact to the day's news because it could reverse itself, you know, several hours later.
Just like the stock market.
I, I will say, to that point, Ron has been awesome. As, you know, he, I mean, all this financial stuff, we, you know, we've been, we've been looking at, but Ron has been just, you know, completely focused on this, you know, in the midst of everything else going on and helping out with the other stuff that's going on, getting this stuff ready. Um, yeah, I know, I'm, I'm not afraid of, uh, us, uh, taking our eye off the road on this one. So. So while we're still on fiscal year twenty, I guess the one thing, um, and it's, I don't know if we can amend the agenda to vote on that, uh.
We can, because this is a regular meeting?
Uh, the, uh, budget amendment.
Okay.
New business?
Yeah. Um, let me just go back, I'm sorry, to the agenda. Um, so under, you know what? We can, yeah, let's do it under new business. We're gonna move this to C and move executive session to D. So, um, do I have a motion to include proposed budget amend, amendment? Um, vote anticipated. Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, Nick. Um, any discussion of adding this? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, just to finish up the, uh, finance update. So for fiscal year twenty, um, I did, um, myself, Donna and Joe, uh, did receive, um, questions from the, um, Board of Finance. I have draft copies of the questions and responses for everyone tonight. Um, I don't know if you wanna, I mean, we could, we could go through it tonight, or I can just hand them out. I'll leave that up to you. It's pretty lengthy, it's pretty long.
Yeah. So why don't we just hand it out? And if anybody has questions, I'm sure Ron will be available for follow-up.
So the Board of Finance meeting is Thursday.
And that's a definite that they're doing?
As far as I know, um, if there's any updates, I'll, I can certainly let you know. The public hearing, I believe, has, is not, not a go.
Not a go?
Yeah.
So then are we meeting at seven then, or are we going to six?
Council chambers, um, not open to the public. They, they have their regular meeting scheduled for six. Um, the public hearing was originally gonna be at seven with the budget workshop to follow. With, without the budget workshop happening, I think that,
We're gonna be.
I'm sorry, without the public hearing happening, the, uh, budget workshop would probably just happen at the end of the regular meeting.
Okay, so should we anticipate being there by seven then?
Um, I don't see their meeting taking more than, uh, maybe a half hour.
Okay.
So, six thirty.
Okay, thank you. But you'll confirm it with us if something changes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that meeting on Thursday is not open to the public? The budget workshop?
It's, it's going to be, um, they're, they'll have a video, I believe.
Need to keep with the governor's suggestion.
But that's why the public hearing is not hap, not happening. Typically, that would happen at the first Board of, uh, Board of Finance meeting.
Are, are, I'm assuming we are invited?
Yes.
Yes. So he said at six thirty, we can.
Right. The, 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 the Board of Ed is invited for who want, whoever wants to go.
It'll be in the chambers, so there should be plenty of rooms to sit.
Joe and I will definitely be there, but yeah, whoever wants to go from the board, it's just not gonna be open to the public because of everything going on. And I didn't even know if they were moving this remotely, this itself remotely.
We talked today too about the, you know, it's not a huge presentation on my part. It's more, they're pretty well-versed in our current budget. It's showing them the, the adjustments that we, that we all made going along throughout the process, throughout those.
Right.
Twenty hours.
We're giving them all of that stuff.
Giving them all that.
Our adjustment list, everything like that.
Again, answering these questions. And, and we did clarify, um, we were gonna be giving the budget with the million-dollar, um, unadjusted number, and Joe was gonna have his, uh.
Right. We're doing all of that.
Sheet with the adjustments outside the budget. So they're aware of that, and they were fine with that, so.
And we also gave, asked some clarifying questions. I know I did, that Mike was answering it for hands on some of the items that they wanted, so.
Is there any discussion about the referendum?
No, I don't know.
So, no, not directly, other than, uh, I believe in the governor's, um, executive order the other day, there was a, um, automatic, you know, extension, I guess, thirty-day extension. Um, our, our referendum would happen before May fifteenth, so, um, it would be extended, whether we choose to, you know, obviously, a lot's going on. Can we even hold the referendum at this point, you know?
Online voting, baby.
Yeah.
Don't tell that to Denise Merrill.
All right. Anything else, Ron?
Nope, that's, uh, that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we are back to, um, did you wanna do the year-to-date budget report projected, or is that health insurance of the talk, or the proposed budget amendment, or no? Who is doing that under Joe's report?
The, the proposed budget amendment, I think, is, that's what we just moved to, uh, that's what just moved to the new business. Now, if you wanna go over the health insurance piece, Ron? I, you know, before we went to the, actually, can I, uh, I, I could walk through one spreadsheet there.
Sure. Which one?
It's the, uh, medical and dental insurance.
Is that, that's.
It's after, it's after the projection.
So it's.
The health?
Oh, right, the health one. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yep. This little one that has the arrows going everywhere?
Yeah, so, so what it is, it's, it's, I, I was basically projecting for, you know, um, this was done on three eleven, so it was the actual, uh, actuals, uh, rolling it forward, and that's where I came up with the, uh, deficit numbers that are in the projection. Um, and then taking those numbers and running through different scenarios, um, the state is projecting a six and a half percent increase with the insurance. We're budgeted at ten percent. What I wanted to do was I wanted to back into Frank's numbers, which I came pretty close to, um, at the ten percent, but I also gave, you know, nobody's recommending to stick, stick with that six and a half percent at this point, because you're leaving yourself no contingency at all.
Yeah, there's no.
Right.
And that, that six and a half percent isn't definite at this point, so.
And is that six and a half, that six and a half plus the penalty if they.
No, that includes, that includes the Fairfield County. That, that's the.
Oh, six and a half includes the penalty?
Yes.
Okay. Wow.
Significantly lower than we anticipated.
Significantly lower. But again, there is no contingency in room if we move to that.
And, and we'll be discussing that with the Board of, uh, Finance. The, the town budgeted it at ten percent also, so.
Okay.
Hey, Ron, can I ask a real ignorant question? Though I don't know if any questions are ignorant. When are we going to be done with the overage from our health accounts now that we moved on to the state plan? Like, are we, are we still playing catch-up?
You mean the, uh.
Town side, they still hold the liability.
Right, that's, okay.
You, you're talking with the self-insured?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, that's, there's, uh, uh, one point five million appropriated in the budget to, to, um, zero that out. And actually, um, in the, in the, uh, budget questions, the, uh, Board of Finance did ask for the, uh, spreadsheet. So there, there is backup in there.
Good, thank you.
Can I, uh, Ron, go back to your very colorful spreadsheet one more time? So if I'm reading this right, if you take the ten percent that we budgeted.
Mm-hmm.
And if it comes in at six and a half, then the difference is two twenty, two fifty-one?
Correct, two twenty.
So if it comes in at six and a half, what your spreadsheet is saying is that there's two twenty, two fifty-one in the.
If, if it actually comes in at six and a half.
If it comes in at six and a half, there's two hundred and twenty-one, two twenty, two fifty-one in the budget that could, it's not extra, but it's budgeted and it's coming in lower.
Correct.
Okay.
And the question is, how would the Board of Finance handle that change?
Right. Would they ask for it? That, yes.
Right. Hopefully, they wouldn't adjust it and we could take stuff off the mil, you know, off our million cut. But again, that's all gonna depend on how they handle that change.
Just wanted to note it, I'm actively keeping my mouth shut, so.
I see you.
Let's not overreact until we get into the process, so.
Yeah. A, as you can imagine, the budget overall, uh, is gonna have its challenges with what's going on, unfortunately, on the revenue side.
Mm-hmm.
But that's for another meeting.
Any changes with the state plan? Um, my, my, I ask because my wife, uh, I believe that their, her district is changing carriers.
Yes, the state plan is, yes.
The state plan in general is.
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
United Healthcare Oxford to anthem.
Okay.
And I think that's where some of the savings may have been generated. I think when they probably bid that out, might be part of the reason why, you know, we're seeing some savings there. Yeah.
Thank you for the date and time.
Yeah, you like that?
I enjoy it very much so. Things are changing hourly, so.
Yeah, you.
You're right.
You're right.
All right, all right, so we will move on. All right, Ron, everything else now covered? We'll wait to the proposed budget amendment to, to new business. So you're good with everything else at this point? All right. So we will move on. There is no old business. Um, we will move on to new business, which is, first up is approval of vision of the graduate.
Yep, I was just looking, yeah, at the last meeting, uh, Mike Crowley and I presented it out on the vision of the graduate, um, that is curriculum work that is obviously gonna take a backseat for a while.
My, it was awesome, that was great.
It was awesome.
It was fun to talk about, you know, something that has to do with kids' curriculum instruction and assessment, the, the reasons why we're here, so.
Yeah.
One of the things, you know, moving.
It brought, it brought teams so fast, didn't it?
It sure did. Uh, yeah, uh, one of the things, you know, that we'd like to do is, uh, is have, you know, you folks approve that and, and continue that work.
Do I have a?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? It was a phenomenal thing.
Just very briefly, you know, um, you know, Joe, I know you were doing this even before, you know, at the beginning of the academic year.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just wanna say, as everyone else has been saying, you know, thank you for all your hard work. But if you look at our district, we're down basically an assistant superintendent, because Joe was our acting superintendent. We're down, uh, finance director in the sense that it's a person, not that we're down a person in the position, but we're down basically two people. And we're still putting together plans in twenty-four hours. We're tracking COVID-19 and the budget, which is under. We're, we're putting together, um, everything that we, we are trying to do. So, um, even with two very high-level positions in any district, uh, we're still pumping out, you know, quality stuff, so.
Stuff as well.
Yeah.
And, and the beginning of the year, I made it known, and I haven't done any surveys on this, but when you go around to all the area towns, our CO, our central office, to me, has always been understaffed. They've been yelling about that for years and years. And now we are hampered, for lack of a better word, and yet you're right. You know, it's incredible work.
Incredible work.
So it's, it's, it's been a team. And, you know, while we're talking about it, I do wanna, uh, just to acknowledge, I've talked to Donna about this, and I know you guys have all been, you know, super supportive of, of everything that's going on. And I, you know, I appreciate that. I know the administrators, uh, appreciate that. Um, you So, it's, it's, it's been a team, and, you know, while we're talking about it, I do wanna, uh, just, you know, I've talked to Donna about this, and I know you guys have all been, you know, super supportive of, of everything that's going on, and I, you know, I appreciate that. I know the administrators, uh, appreciate that. Um, you know, I was talking to Donna the other day, and I've talked to Jack who's here, and there's a reason why Jack is here. One of the things. Pick it up, Jack. No, I can't mute it, 'cause then they won't hear me. Um, having Jack here, uh, is not accidental. One of the things, uh, Donna and I were talking about is, if you, uh, the, the example I keep using is, does anyone want to show a bar rescue?
I had no idea what this was.
I watch Bar Rescue a lot.
Oh, yes.
Where they try to, they try to turn the bars over, and, and as they're, as they're doing that, um, they, they do what's, they perform what's called the stress test, where they just, you know, absolutely throw people, you know, everything's at every angle at people. And, um, you know, if this wasn't a stress test before COVID nineteen, holy cow. Um, you know, it's been, it's been, uh, an amazing stress test, and, and a number of people have stepped up to help out, and, and most notably, Jack Checalini, who's been there, uh, has tremendous, um, depth of knowledge about this town, each school. He's been the principal of an elementary school, he's been the band director of a high school, he's been the principal of a middle school. Um, and Jack, very candidly, approached me and said, listen, I'll give, you know, no, no change of anything, but I'll come up and help you out. Um, and, you know, in the midst of all this, I'm like, Jack, yeah, that'd be great, if you can help me out for, for the, uh, the time being. So, um, Jack's gonna be, uh, working up at Central Office with us and, um, and helping out. We were talking about, you know, backfilling him with, you know, you know, having instructional leaders kind of fill in as, to help with the day-to-day, and Jack would still be the principal of the middle school. Um, you know, unfortunately, by circumstances, um, but fortunately, for this circumstance, you know, we're not gonna have to worry about backfilling it for the day-to-day. There's not gonna be day-to-day discipline, uh, unless we start sending our people to the houses so they can calm parents down.
Hey, Jack, go on Wheeler Road now.
But I, I really, I wanna publicly, I wanna publicly thank Jack, and, and I know, I think Alan, you brought it up right the first night, about, hey, how about Jack Checalini? I should've listened to you the first night, because you were right on. Um, and so, I, I, I do wanna publicly, uh, thank Jack and just let you all know that he'll be up, you know, working with us. It's just, it'd be a huge, huge, uh.
Joe, it's a smart, it's a smart move, John. You don't even have to go any further.
Thanks.
Yep.
I was like, yes, yes.
Nah.
Very smart move.
I keep telling people.
Thank you, Jack, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Jack.
And not at all surprising that you stepped up.
Yeah.
No, I'm not surprised either. You're exactly right, George.
That's the kind of spirit we're looking for here. Everybody pulling together and working together and no agendas, just everybody. The only agenda is we're all working together for the best for the district and the kids, and doing the best that we can.
Yep. All right, back to the Vision of the Graduate. All in favor? Thank you, motion.
Bye.
Okay. They're all said yes on the phones, I am. All right, we will move on to discussion approval of the massive graduation date, and God willing, there is a graduation date.
God, yeah, God willing.
Virtual, baby, virtual.
Right.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure something out. God willing, there will be, there will be something. It was really, um, it was really fortuitous of us this year. It wasn't by any, uh, act of great foresight, but, um, if you remember back in, uh, I think it was November, we changed our graduation, um, date policy. Um, and the, the state had just offered some additional flexibility for us on when we could set the graduation date, and, you know, just to be able to have that flexibility, and at that time, we're like, well, you never know what's gonna happen, and who could have ever seen this coming. So, you know, the language reads, "The Board of Education may establish for any school year a firm high school graduation date, which is no earlier than the one hundred eightieth day noted in the school calendar originally adopted by the Board of the school year." So, we have some options here.
What to go for?
The, um, the, the one hundred and eightieth day of the originally, uh, the original calendar would be, uh, Wednesday, June tenth. The one hundred eighty-second day, which would have been our last day, is Friday, June twelfth, and, you know, before this most recent outage, we were scheduled to get out on June seventeenth, which again, is a Wednesday. Personal preference, you know, I, I hope we're there, and I hope we have graduation, and if we do, I know it's a lot easier for families when it happens on a Fri, on a, you know.
So, I was just thinking the same thing, a Friday would be perfect.
Me too.
Friday, June twelfth?
Yep.
Friday, June twelfth.
I'm fine with that. Do I have a motion that it's Friday, June twelfth? I'll take, uh, Nick and Jeff. And you throw the discussion on that? All in favor of June twelfth? Great, thank you. Motion passes. The phone says aye, both. Okay, perfect, thank you.
And Joe, you'll, you know, as the date gets closer, a call will have to be made, it can be altered.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I mean, that, yeah.
Hopefully. All right, so we will move on now to item C, which is now going to be the, um, proposed budget amendment.
And again, I wanna thank Ron for his work on, uh, on, on this. Um, you know, in the midst of everything else that was going around, that was going on in the past two weeks, Ron was steadfast in keeping on, keeping an eye on the budget. We are, you know, this budget transfer is a demonstration on our part that we are doing everything in our power to mitigate the deficit that we have this year. Um, you know, I called this Budget Freeze Round Two with the administrators, so we got into a room again, and we said, all right, let's come back up. Now, the first time, we were able to come up with, you know, a little over five hundred thousand dollars. You know, this time, we're at, um, two hundred and, just under two hundred and twenty, two hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, two nineteen, six hundred.
Um, and again, uh, a lot of that was, um, was work with our, uh, maintenance staff, um, facilities, repairs, um, but then going back to the schools, we did take a lot more money still from the schools. Um, they have very little left, but they still have a little bit of something if we, if we were to come back. Um, so, you know, there is, there's a little bit of, uh, you know, there's a little bit more there, but as you could tell, we were at five hundred the first time, two, two hundred and twenty the second time. Um, and we'll kind of see where we end up. Our, our thoughts on this, and what I kind of told people, so they, um, so they understood, was that we're gonna do this budget amendment, take that money, and we're gonna put it back on that, that bottom line number, which we now call.
Budget adjustments to be determined.
Yeah, the budget adjut, uh, the budget adjustment line at the bottom. So, that was, I think, ninety-eight thousand, so we'll now, we'll add two hundred and nineteen thousand there, so we'll be over three hundred thousand there. What we've told people is that if we run into a problem with something along the way, and if we have to go back in and get money back out of there, we will. But, you know, like I said, we've been beg, borrow, and stealing, you know, looking under every rock.
Oh, that was Joe. This was incredible, come on.
It's good, and it's, it's these guy, these guys did so much that.
Incredible. I don't know if we can say enough the outstanding job that you and the team has done since the mid-January forward.
I think it's unheard of what they say.
Are great.
Yeah.
I will say this on the, on the record. I went, I went to, uh, a faculty meeting, and, you know, the faculty feels it, and they know, and.
Oh, I've heard it.
But they're, but they're awesome. They're awesome, and I, I, this is, I'm not lying. Um, you know, at, at, at Font Hollow, the part of the conversation was, hey, who, does anyone have extra paper clips? 'Cause I'm running short on paper, and they, you know, they're sharing stuff across. I mean, you know, it's, it's that granular, but, you know, we're making it work. We're sharing stuff between schools, between teachers, and, uh, you know, people know it's, you know, we've tightened our belts.
Absolutely. Do I have, uh, so, do, wait, you already did this motion, right?
Yes.
It was Nick and Jeff? Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor of the proposed budget amendment? Great, thank you. Motion passes.
Aye.
Both on the phone, thank you.
Ma'am, sure, I hate to do this to you, 'cause I know you, I didn't put this on the agenda, but it just came to me.
Oh, my.
Aw, man, I just got it.
No, no, no. Joe, I just need, with all going on, and you're gonna wanna throw something at me. We've never held the calendar committee yet.
We have, it's coming.
Okay.
Actually, uh.
I just, it's just go on.
See, I'm glad you said that, Jer, because it, it brings up a, a better point. Um, you know, I, um, I had, uh, you know, John Batiste's been coming up, and he's been, he's been helping out, volunteering, just coming up, and.
Yep.
It's awesome, 'cause he comes up and he just says, you're doing that? Let me have that. You're doing calendar? Let me have that. And then, um, Deb Kavachi has come up.
I know, which is great.
And, and Deb actually.
Both volunteering.
Yeah, just volunteering, coming up to volunteer, and, uh, she took the calendar. She goes, I heard you have calendar committee, that's supposed to be, give it to me, I used to do it, and so she has it, it's, it's ready to go. Um, now, it's just gonna be a matter of zooming in at a meeting and, and doing it.
That's fine, thank you.
That's incredible. I, I bet not too many places can say things like that, that we're talking about, with this level of pitching in, volunteering, and all just working together. It's, it's really incredible, and we really do appreciate everyone that's working on, on everything here.
Good people.
Yep, and, and actually, John's mother-in-law passed away and was still here, helping us out, working, um, through the midst of all that involuntarily. So, and I asked Joe to have sent, them send something to John and Belinda on behalf of the Board for that.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Doc.
We will move on to item D now, which is an executive session to discuss collective bargaining. Do I have a, and we'd like to invite, um, do you want Ron in there too?
Yeah, yes, definitely.
So, we will, um, in inviting, um, Joe Kavza as acting superintendent and Ron Bonoski as, what are we calling you, interim director of finance?
I believe so, yes.
We'll just call you that. Do you need Jack in there too?
Would you like Jack in there? Joe?
Sure.
And Jack Checalini, uh, we will call you silk principal of Jackie Hollow's school.
Pick a title, whatever.
Pick one, whatever you'd like. Probably wants you home.
Um, do I have a motion to move into executive section? Thank you, Jerry and Alan. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, we are in executive session, so we need to be off, will take no action of this.